Back live. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name's Marty Lobnow, South 35 West 33265 Honeysuckle Court, which is in Doucement. So I do not live adjacent to this property. I'm also a co-owner of Waukesha Floral and Greenhouse at 319 South Prairie in the city of Waukesha, and I'm looking at it as in a different perspective. I don't live next to this property. I'm looking at it as the economic stimulus that it might be able to provide your town. So I'm gonna leave the whole argument about where it's located to that. Being in the flower business, I'm the one who's gonna supply flowers to this venue, okay? You know, let's get that right out in the open. I'm for venues like this because they're things that are gonna, you know, spur our communities along. We don't have enough of these venues in the city of Waukesha, Town of Waukesha. We're constantly sending people to Milwaukee to find a venue of this sort, okay? Or out to Oconawak or Heartland or, you know, out of the city. I'd like to see something like this in the city. I think it's a good development. I've known the Miller family for 15 years. I think they've put up a very good development in whatever they do, if it's apartments. Every place I've ever been that they've built has always been a nice quality of development. Again, I'm not discussing if it should be in this spot or not. I just think that if you are going to look at the things that they've put on this presentation, I think you can hold their feet to the fire because they're a quality family and they are gonna stick by what they said. I don't think you're gonna have to hold their feet to the fire because that's the kind of people they are. What they say, they're gonna deliver on. So I understand everybody's concerns about this, but I would just like to say on behalf of my business and what I see here, I think it'd be a good development for the town. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much. Bye now.
Yeah, let me ask that. Everybody gets a chance to speak before we speak twice.
Good evening. Nick Rodig, West 234, South 4825, Mill Creek Trail. So commentary-wise, you guys all know it already, you've already heard it. Appreciate you giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. Appreciate the fact that the applicant has done a formal presentation this evening and listened to some of the comments that have previously been shared from last February. So we're talking facts and figures. The laws have changed, right? The rules have changed. So I'm not gonna refute the report from the engineer. I'm an engineer myself, I'm sure his facts and figures I'll check out. That being said, it is not an active system, it's a passive system. So what does that mean? It means it's just monitoring the level. It sets off a red light from reading through the report quickly, and that means that the managers, the owners of the business, need to be monitoring that and then take action. So that leaves you with the human element. Having those crucial or critical conversations can be quite difficult, even for people that have been in the business before. So I guess from my perspective, the one thing I'd ask the board to consider is what you put in place or how do you ensure that you're actually maintaining that 80 or 85 decibels that the report talks about inside to ensure the 75 at the lot line? Because if it's not being monitored, if it's not being enforced, that level raises, as we know the volume increases often at these types of events. And then 75 at the lot line will no longer be 75, but will be higher. So just like the board to consider that and the applicants to consider that, and appreciate you for it.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Scott Abrahamson, South 49, W23330, Mill Creek Trail. I believe they've provided substantial evidence as to why we shouldn't have this because a bar, food, and music in a residential area doesn't fit the use of the area. So providing conditional use in a use that doesn't fit doesn't make any sense to me. I think I'm really uniquely qualified to be up here speaking for two reasons. I was a professional musician for 10 years, and I have been a real estate appraiser for 30. So I know about noise, I know about loud, I know about property value. So let's talk about both. We all moved out of your quality of life. We all know that in events on a hot summer night, people spill out in the parking lot. We've all covered this before. We know that people go out there to smoke, they go out there to talk, and there's no control over that. When the doors open, the music carries. What nobody's really brought up is that 75 decibels, no band ever plays that quietly. A drummer is louder than that. So let's get that out in the open. You can look at any study anywhere on the internet, you will see that. And you know that from being at events. You know that there is no way anyone will be playing at 75 decibels. Nobody brought up the fact that that whole area is wetland and open. The sound carries. I go out, first of all, they run this event this summer, everybody's got their windows open. We go outside in the day and we can hear the farmers plowing. That's great, that's country noise, that's good noise. We can hear the trains, we're gonna hear this event. So enough said about noise, now we'll put on the appraiser hat. Appraisal Institute President, the Appraisal Institute, by the way, is a very highly recognized organization. In the Business Insider of November 2016, Article 13 Things That Will Trash Your Home's Value, he quotes, "Living near a bad, noisy neighbor can lower home values by their studies nationwide, 5% to 10%." Can look that up, Business Insider, November 2016, Richard L. Borges. So keeping on the appraiser hat for now, I did some research going back to 2013. I tried to imagine an event venue like this being very similar to a clubhouse in a community that has a neighborhood pool and clubhouse or a neighborhood that has golf courses in it, because those are event centers. Therefore, I disagree with that appraiser's rationale, just looking at home sales. You can't look at the home sales. They're all different. One may have more square footage, more quality, more amenities. Looking at home sales doesn't tell the story. What I did, I looked at land sales. I have, from the Broadlands North Prairie, from 2013 to 2015, I also ran Morning Star down in Town of Vernon, and also The Legends in Wales. I have conclusive evidence by citing five land sales out of each of these projects year over year, showing that the lots that sold closest to the event center or the clubhouse always sold for less. In 2013, 10,000 to 25,000 less in the Broadlands. 2014, 9,100 to 18,000. And 2015, 3,100 to 20,000. Morning Star, we had a little bit less activity. I had to go back to 2004. $14,100 difference from close to the clubhouse to farther in the neighborhood. The Legends in Wales, very nice clubhouse there, weddings all the time, bar, restaurant. From 2007 to 2011, variances of $21,000 to $110,100 for similar-sized lots, proximate to the clubhouse as to further into the neighborhood. Estes Rawland, again, you're taking out the variable of the home, what it has, we're just looking at location. And location is what we're talking about. I live in the neighborhood next to it, and I don't wanna go outside, and I don't wanna sit there and hear on a Saturday night at midnight when I'm trying to sleep with my window open and the fresh air coming in, a bunch of drunks out in the parking lot saying whatever they're saying, because I don't wanna hear it. And I didn't move out here, neither did all these people to hear it. So that's hard evidence. Noise is hard evidence. At 75 dBs, like I said, they provided a nice presentation, but there's no facts that they're gonna follow that, and there's no band or no DJ around that will play at that level. In closing, just wanted to say, since everything else has been covered, I'm not gonna repeat it, I'm just giving you hard evidence. The only thing that really concerns me here is the quality of life in the town. And I wanna remind everybody up here what precedes your title. The town planner, the town chairman, the town attorney, town supervisors. What does that mean? You represent the town, not your personal interest. I have a real problem ethically with town planning, Mr. Miller being on it, and Mr. Merrick being into the planning business. That's fine, you go ahead and do it, but don't do it in the town. Thank you.
I'm gonna comment on that. That didn't work out very well. Be quiet, please. I'm gonna comment on that. That didn't work out for me very well a number of weeks ago when I was before the board in this very chamber. So don't question the ethics and morality of the men and women that sit up on this board. Good evening.
Are we being punished now? Are you punishing us, yelling at us like schoolchildren? Is that what you're doing?
I wasn't yelling at you or anybody else. I was addressing a comment that begs me about my ethics.
Stop it. Shut up. Words to that effect. Why don't you read the...
Do you have a comment to make, sir?
Yeah, I guess we made it.
Let's make it.
You wanna answer it, because you're the one that said, "Any questions..."
You need their name and address for the clerk, please.
Yeah, Greg Zabluski, W234, South 5030, Woodchuck Lane. You might wanna write these questions down, because you're the one an hour ago that just said you'll answer all the questions at the end of our comments here. So I got a lot of them, and I'll expect an answer from there. Okay? You and your sidekick here, to the left.
We're gonna start personal attacks.
No personal attack.
Yes. We're gonna stop personal attacks.
Oh, again, being punished now, right? Make sure you write these down, because I'm expecting an answer, that's what she said. You're gonna wait till everything's done, then you're gonna answer my questions. So here we go. Because I'm gonna hold you accountable. You can glare at me all you want, that's better than...
Not glaring.
I didn't attend the February meeting, and I was going to ask whether or not Mr. Miller was on the planning commission, whose name that I saw on the April 26th. Thank you, Scott Abrahamson, for confirming that. You can sit there in clear conscience and not see any problem with that.
Sir, I'm gonna address this as an independent person of this board, okay?
Great.
Okay, I wanna address this question right now. Okay, in the very recent past, there has been a number of people who are in the development business that have come before him this board. And I sat in the chairman's chair when the chairman came before the board, and I made the error of listening to everybody telling me about what kinda conflict of interest I had and how we were all in the pocket of the chairman because he sits on the board and all of that kinda nonsense.
Well, hopefully, the nonsense...
Now you're gonna let me finish, okay? Because you asked a question, and now you're gonna let me finish.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So I'm not gonna sit here on both cases, the gentlemen who sit on various boards for this town had both of their projects rejected. So I'm tired of hearing about how we're all in their pocket and it's all rigged and all of that nonsense, okay? We are here to listen to your concerns. I am not here to have you question my integrity or the integrity of anyone else, and that is where it's gonna end.
Oh, okay.
All right?
If you say so.
You, I am saying so. You will not stand there and question my integrity unless you have some kind of fact that shows that I have a conflict of interest here.
First of all, I wasn't even addressing you.
You were addressing the board, and I am a member of this board.
Well, I hope you feel better. If you, if you have some sort of a shortcoming with integrity or you have a problem with somebody making what you perceive to be accusations, guess what? That's on you, okay? You could be, you could be tired of it.
Mr. Chairman, you can call me out of order, please.
Yeah, I do. Now I'm gonna...
You have a Mr. Chairman calling out of order, please.
You are out of order, sir. Please find a seat, and the next speaker, please.
Out of order?
Yes, sir.
You can be tired of it.
You're out of order, sir. Please find your seat. Or vacate the hall, sir.
What, are you gonna call the police on it?
Yes.
Well, let's talk about that, because there aren't gonna be enough police to mandate...
Sir, have a seat or leave the hall.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a recess, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
You wanna talk about police? There's not gonna be enough police to patrol this area. Go ahead and walk out, week one.
Paul Mikek, South 51, West 23108, Partridge Lane. So you're asking for substantial evidence, and so I would consider that the Minnesota Department of Public Safety as a substantial group. In 2013, the fatality rate per miles driven was 2.6 times higher in rural areas than in urban areas. Nationwide in 2013, 10,760 people were killed in alcohol-impaired driving crashes, and rural areas accounted for 54% of those fatalities. In another study I found from Rhode Island, recent studies show that rural areas have a much larger problem with intoxicated driving, particularly drunk driving compared to urban areas. In fact, rural areas account for the majority of traffic fatalities in the nation regardless of levels of intoxication. Now, going back to the previous study, in addition to the fact that drunk driving increases in rural areas, there's likely more serious medical consequences for being injured in a crash caused by a drunk driver in a rural area due to increased response times based on distance to be traveled by emergency response teams. Town of Waukesha has a volunteer fire department. They're not on duty, they're on call. So we're talking about the safety of residents, the safety of the people that would go to this venue? Well, we're not protecting them because we don't have the ability to do that. And the studies show that rural areas have a higher chance of injury and drunk driving. Thank you.
Could I get your name and address for the clerk once more, please?
Paul Mikek, South 51, West 23108, Partridge Lane.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tom Beldel, West 230, South 4512, right at the hill from the establishment and basically across the street from Ken.
Milky Way?
Yeah, Milky Way, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Ken and Stephen, you've done a really good job refining the pitch. They've brought in a team, got some experts in, they know how to play the law very, very well. They've obviously done that, they've taken apart the specifications of it and met every single one of those things. And while I personally venomously disagree with this, and I think that the decimal thing is a bunch of horseshit, I wanna know what kind of enforcement there is. So while I was sitting here, I read Act 67. It's not very long, relatively straightforward. They've done a very good job of putting you guys into an iron box, which is probably where some of the stress comes from, because you can't do anything about everything that these people, including me, would say. So my question, though, is that what kind of enforcement process is there? Because it is very, very clear in Act 67 that you guys have the power to enforce or to put in some rules and regulations into this permit that is gonna be granted, because you almost have to grant it. Not that I like it, but you have to, or they can turn around and sue you, as it happens all over the country. What I would like to do is, the decimal thing is a joke. When you sit on my, when you sit on my deck, Lieutenant South, you can literally hear people talking as they walk down Long's Deck. And bands don't play at 75 decibels. This is going to be loud, and there's no way in hell that's gonna be 75 decibels at the lot line. So what if somebody brings empirical evidence in 12 months and says, again, what, they routinely avoid the 75 decimal thing? Are you willing to put something into the permit that says that's enough to cancel it? Are you willing to put something into the permit that says, "They say 150 people"? Now, they also state clearly, this gentleman and his wife have ran these types of establishments, maybe not their own, but for other people, and I would assume they're very good at it, right? So let's just say that they are. 150 people ain't very much. The rules say 300. They say 150 because it sounds good. But what about when it turns into 200 because they're doing really well? What about when it turns into 250 because they're doing really well? Or 299 on a regular basis because they're doing very well? They fit within the rules. So he sits here and says 150. Personally, I think that's horseshit, because if a successful business goes off and somebody wants to bring 200, they're gonna take the 200. So what is gonna be put into it? How is it gonna be organized? What kind of enforcement's gonna be in place when the decimal level is over 75? What enforcement's gonna be in place when the population is over 150 or the parking lot size is doubled? What kind of enforcement's gonna be in place to stop people from ripping up and down Milky Way Road, which is a narrow, fast road already the way it is? And now you add alcohol, parties, and booze, and distracted driving, and send those people down to Milky Way. What kind of enforcement are you willing to put into it, into the permit? So that when all this crap happens that everybody's worried about, when a guy gets punched in the eye after the abuse thing, like the guy I was talking about? What kind of, what kind of stuff are you willing to put into the permit so we can say, "No, no, no, Ken. No offense, Ken, you seem like a nice-nut guy."
Very nice.
But what's, you probably are. But what's gonna be in place when that system goes out of control? What's gonna be in place when it exceeds what they've been talking about? Because personally, I believe that he probably means this. I do. I have no reason not to. But when businesses grow, I run a business too, I ran two of them successfully for years. When businesses grow, they're gonna grow. When there's the need, they're gonna grow. So what are you gonna put into it that's gonna stop that from happening or give me and everybody else in the room the recourse to come back in a year and say, "Ken, you are full of shit"?
Enough for that.
Okay, fine. But what's gonna be put into it? Are you willing to put something into it or are you just gonna roll over? Because right now, according to the statute and the way that you make it sound tonight, it seems like you guys are gonna have to roll over or potentially face a lawsuit. I get this. But there is some flexibility in 67 that lets you put things into it.
And we are.
Okay? Why are we gonna see this list?
It says 75.
And what's gonna happen when it exceeds it?
Then we have, then if there's substantial evidence that's exceeding it, then we go back to them and we can pull their conditional use.
And it's gonna be 150, it's gonna be the limit. So when I walk down the street and I exercise, can you let me finish, please? When I walk down the street and count 160 people on a regular basis, is it gonna be, "Oh, you didn't have a lawyer coming, somebody else coming?", and I'll have substantial, whatever the heck you wanna call it? Because this sounds just like you do what you do to get in and then you just take and run off. It's very possible. I'm not saying that's his intent. I believe the guy. But when it grows, it grows, so what's gonna be done about it? So you're telling me I can come back a year after Ken gets the permit, and I have records of the decibels being over 75, and they had company at 150? You're gonna pull this permit?
We can.
Can? It sounds to me like you should. It sounds to me like you should say, "You're right, Mr. Bethany, that's a great plan, because that's what we said and that's what we meant." Why you laughing, Mike? I'm telling, I'm advising the chairman to stop with the back and forth, because it's not an appropriate way to run a public hearing. Could be the case. But these are my concerns. I understand your situation, that your hands are tied, I get this. But they're not totally tied. So I just wanna know what the ramifications are when these are met, and how bad it can be, and all the rest of the people in the room that are against this can say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, you gave it to them because of this." But in the long run, it turned out to be not true.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Nervous here, Dave Schwabe, W229, S5083, Hunter's Hollow. I live in South Division directly across the conservancy people have been talking about. To me, listening to all of this, there's some good pluses. I mean, I see the pluses. I mean, it's a nice business, it'd be nice for the town. But you see some negatives. I mean, people, quality of life and all this, some stuff that you can't really put a number on, or maybe you can, but higher minds would do that. But I just had a few things that I just wanted you guys to realize, and I know you're stuck with this law, you know, substantial evidence, whatever, but you still have the ability to put limitations and the ability to perhaps have them put monitors on that would, in a year's time, or whatever, six months down the road, or whatever, that can monitor the situation that they have going. People talk about 75 decibels. Why can't he put up decimal meters around all the perimeter of the property and have that information streamed to a computer and, you know, we'll have it minute by minute, day by day, hour by hour, all the time to see if he does? Go beyond him. That you can require him to do. The other part is, I'm a little wary about the security issue, because, you know, people are going to loiter in the parking lot, they're gonna go back to the parking lot, I did it at my wedding, they do things, and it's, you know, that kinda stuff's gonna be happening. So the security, I mean, this is, 150 people is a lot of people to be in a relatively small area and not be monitored. I think security should probably be something that you guys should require him to have, whether it's one person, or cameras, or whatever. Something like, the minimum should be cameras and stuff to see what's going on out there, just for the liability of the town itself. Because if something happens there, someone leaves and drives away and kills somebody because they're drunk or something, they come back to us too. This is, you know, us, all of us, which is you, okay? So that's the other thing. Property assessments, people are worried about their property assessments going down. I heard an appraiser talk, my opinion, another guy talk, my opinion. Have them apply for appraisals for everybody who lives immediately around their property and pay for it to see what would happen now and if his business is up and going later, okay? So it's something like that. Why can't that, something like, it's simple, okay? That's substantial evidence, okay? And then, again, why, like, maybe a year down the road or something like that, you know, there's gonna be people coming back and complaining, I'm sure, you know, as this goes on, that you can't have these, you know, metrics to come back and say, "Yes, he is, he is complying with his conditional, conditional, conditional use permit," and, or he's not, "And he needs to do better in this, and this, and this." Okay, so then that would alleviate a significant amount of these people's problems, okay? Mine, my biggest problem would probably be noise. I hear the train like it's in my backyard. I mean, that, I, I, don't get, I love the train noise, I do. But when the windows open, it wakes me up, and I'm two and a half miles away from those, from that sucker. So there's, I mean, that one person mentioned, noise travels across that conservancy like I can hear someone talking on the opposite side in their driveway saying that they had a rough day at work. I swear, I was like, I couldn't believe it. I was like, "My wife, you gotta listen to this." So that can happen, so the 75 decibels will carry too, so that, that's fine, okay? But that's what the ordinance says, that's what the ordinance says. But you can have it monitored and we, and then come to us and say, "Yes, look, you can't complain because they're following the rules." Or, or not. So, and I think that would make a lot of people happier, and it'd be a CYA for you guys, so, and for him also, okay? It sounds like a nice venue. I mean, I wouldn't mind having a wedding there. Really? But it's just the location that has people upset, and that's what this whole thing's about, so, all right? So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
That's why he came back smiling.
Yeah, yeah.
For the record, we didn't call. We didn't call, we did not call him out, for the record.
We didn't identify him, we just said that.
So that's somebody else.
Nobody else called him, we did not call him.
Next.
Ryan Bedford, 4513, Milky Way Road. My wife and I's property is the closest property to the entrance of this site. Ken is my father-in-law, and he has developed, you know, tons of sites around the county in southeast Wisconsin for years, and every site he's done has been immaculate. He actually has told me, as, as I work on developments, that you wanna try to make it as Disney-esque as possible, try to make it as beautiful as you possibly can, because that's what brings the people to you. So I'm just gonna hit on a couple points, I've done this enough, or I know you don't wanna listen to me talk, and I absolutely have no substantial evidence. I think Adam pointed out everything he needed to in support of this. Traffic. I've called the sheriff's department multiple times for people that speed down Milky Way. Now... Now, as Mr. Hammond said, it's relentless and I know exactly where they're coming from because I follow them and they go into that Mill Creek subdivision and they, they speed not because they're coming down Milky Way once, they speed because they do it over and over every day. The people coming to this venue are not going to speed down Milky Way because they don't even know where they're going. So I just want to make that point, that the speeders on Milky Way are coming from Mill Creek. I can even show you the houses they come from because I followed them and called the sheriff's department. The next point is the drinking. They're obviously going to get a liquor license and with that liquor license, they need to have somebody that is licensed to serve liquor. That means they have to be competent enough to be able to tell if someone's had too many to drink or not. Now, from my house, I can see plenty of parties and plenty of fireworks shows that happen and I can tell you that those people do not have anybody that's serving liquor to those people that's licensed. And how many of those parties, those graduation parties, summer parties, are people driving drunk? I think you're going to have more accountability at this place than you do at all these rest of these subdivisions. My last comment is going to be on this land. And people want to talk about how Ken wants to try to make money on this. Would it be a hell of a lot easier for Ken to split up this land into 38 lots and sell them individually? Mr. Bellman would be able to attest to how much money he's made doing that. So for people to say that he's just making money on it is pretty ridiculous. He wants to keep this rural, as Jimmy said, he wants to be able to continue to farm the hayland. To me, this is the only acceptable use to this property that would keep it rural. And everybody, and these people in here that may object to that, they live in these subdivisions, they don't live on 20 or 30 acres like I do and they don't know what rural living really is. They live in these subdivisions, they come out there and they think that that's rural. It's not rural. This is rural. Ken will continue to have horses, he'll continue to farm it for hay. That's rural living. So those are the only comments I had. Thank you. Sorry.
Next speaker.
Good evening. Rudy Zylehoffer, I live on Milky Way Road, West 229, South 3958, Milky Way Road. I have a lot of friends on both sides of this issue. So I'm trying to stay as neutral as I can and just try to figure out like what's the right thing. And I keep getting back to the point of if Ken wanted to, he could subdivide that. We could have a lot more traffic seven days a week, going and coming. I think most of what's going to happen is going to be a Friday night or Saturday night. There's going to be some weddings. 150 people is probably less than 75 cars. I'd rather see that 75 cars once or twice a week, maybe a little more than once or twice a week. But I think that's way better than having a subdivision where everybody has two cars, some have three. We had four kids in our family at one time. We had six cars in our, in our family. You know, how many cars are going to be going up and down our Milky Way Road if another subdivision's built over there with, I don't know how many houses you could put in there? But we've had enough of that. There's, there's, there's plenty of that and I would much rather see something like this. Now, when I came here tonight, I wasn't sure what I thought, but after listening to everybody, I think this is the right thing for this area and it's much better than putting in a large subdivision with all that traffic and all that noise and all, all those problems. And I think the last gentleman made a lot of good points as far as monitoring alcohol. I, I really think that you're going to be way better off having a registered licensed bartender serving alcohol as opposed to, you know, just all the, all those summer parties that go on. I don't think this is that bad of an idea. I think you should allow it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Hout, Woodchuck Lane, South 50, W-23485. I guess I agree with the other speaker that spoke about recourse. If you guys could put some teeth into the conditional use, the 75 decibels, the hours of operation. I just have vivid memories of the baseball diamond going in. They had hours that they were supposed to abide by. They chose not to. The town tried to force them. Legal action ensued and rather than comply, they requested to be annexed by the city. And I would just try and avoid something like that. If you could put something in there saying if they did not comply, there would be a consequence. Thank you.
Thank you.